Good evening and welcome to our May 23rd, 2024 Business Meeting. We are reconvening after being in executive session. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this point in the meeting, the public may speak on any of the listed agenda items, but since I don't see any public here, I'm going to assume that nobody's going to speak to the agenda items. Let me see, the Treasurers Report for March 2024 is available in the Business Office. I would like to begin the Consent Agenda with item number one, please.
Resolve to approve Consent Agenda, Items 2 through 13 as appears on the Consent Agenda portion of this agenda.
Second, questions or comments? Mrs. Bellino?
The Board is approving CSE/CPSE placements, amending the 23-24 substitute list, approving, amending or approving unpaid hours for staff members, the approval for the 2024 ESY program staffing, approve agreements with health and welfare document from Austin and a health and welfare document from Bedford, and also a healthcare and retirement agreement with the staff member who's retiring, authorizing superintendent of schools to enter into 24-25 salary letters of agreement for a physical therapist and occupational therapist, total of three people, amending a provisional appointment. Sarah Pellegrino is being appointed permanently from her provisional status. We're approving staff members attending special education teacher 12 to 1 high school cohort meetings. We're accepting the bid for construction, trade, services, and repair for carpentry to SRT construction, accepting a donation from the New York State Department of Health Administration for administering the New York Youth Tobacco Survey to the amount of $500 to the high school. We're appointing assistant principals as acting principals with full authority of a building principal with regard to student suspension in the absence of a building principal. And we're nominating the NISBA Area 10 Director. The Board is putting forward Cheryl Brady's name for this position. She's the incumbent in the position. Is that right? Yes, and that's it.
Any other questions or comments? Just so you know, Cheryl has done an amazing job. She sends out a monthly newsletter that's informative and keeps us in the loop. She's a local person, so she's running again, so I'm glad that we're going to nominate her. Okay, any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolutions are the pass. Okay, presentations. Want to introduce it or?
So, our presentation this evening focuses on the PNW Bosie CTE program, and I'd like to welcome up Ms. Jackie Levine. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lauten. Good evening. Very excited to present on this topic tonight, and let's just get right into it. Our career in tech programs are really just fascinating opportunities for our students. I had the opportunity myself to go to the tech center, which I haven't been to in a few years, but I went to it last week to collect some images and pictures and see what was going on and how our students were doing. And I happened to run into this lovely young lady here, who I'll introduce shortly, to also co-present with me tonight. And I don't know if you've ever had the joy of going into a career in tech center, but to see our students from all over the region, hard at work, hands-on, getting into some of the most interesting projects. And just a side story of my own personal joyful moment, there was a student I had worked with at the Bosies when I was there in a literacy capacity. I was working on my Wilson certification, and he was a student in the Walden Building, and I think he was in fourth grade at the time. And as I walked through this building with Steve Lowry into the carpentry section, there was this very tall young man standing there, working on his carpentry work, and he didn't recognize me right away, but I recognized him. And we chatted and reintroduced ourselves to a degree, but he seemed to remember our work together, and he was so excited to show me all of the projects he had been working on in carpentry and how successful he had been. And that is a testament to these programs, that all students in all levels and all capacities can find their passion and grow in such amazing ways, and they're nurtured so well by these experienced professionals from the field who take on the role of teacher in these programs and turn it into a great experience that our students then walk away with potential careers, certifications even, and just all around a wonderful experience. So I had the pleasure of being able to walk through the building that day, not only having that experience of seeing a former student grow into this wonderful young man with such a great passion for carpentry, but all of the levels of the tech center, because if you've seen this building before, it graduates downward in levels until you get to the auto mechanics department. But at the very top, you may be in graphic design or some kind of architecture program, and each level is a brand-new program. And then there's like a little side level where there's cosmetology and barbering. And so you go through all these hallways and stairwells and nooks and crannies, and you find these amazing programs happening. There's veterinary science, where they have a dog they're caring for that's like a member of the class, and they have this great animation studio where they're actually building animation. They have a graphic design studio where they are preparing products. They're preparing water bottles and, you know, trying different designs on and learning all of the different tools and have so much technology at their fingertips, cutting-edge technology. So it was really just such a wonderful experience. I know I had been there before as an employee of Bosie's, but going back now with my new lens and my new capacity was a really thrilling experience. And I felt like our students were really in the best of hands with professionals from the fields and showing them how to do a trade, how to build skills, and also a new way to love school. So it was just a wonderful experience all around. So tonight, you know, I wanted to give you kind of insight into what is the PNW Bosie Tech Center program? What does it do for our students? What does it do for Putnam Valley, namely? And how many of our students are enrolled? And where are they enrolled? Where do we see the trends? So essentially, our tech center program has about 40 different career and technical education programs. Students can also receive academic credit there. They can get everything from physical education, art, and health to English, math, social studies. Mr. Lowry, the director of the program, took me through each of the classrooms, and one of the classrooms we went into was an ENL GED program, where students are working on their English proficiency and preparing for the GED. Students attend for one or two years, so it usually happens within their junior year. They select career programs in the prior year and sophomore year, and they start attending in junior year, and they can go for those one or two years. And they go for two or four hours a day, sometimes longer, but largely two to four hours a day. And that could be a two-hour block in the morning, eight to 10. It could be the midday block, or it could be the afternoon block, the 12 to 2. And you'll see our numbers later where we have the most students attending and at what times. They can walk out with a certificate in a particular field. They can walk out with a Regents diploma and with a technical endorsement. So there are a number of different things that our students can take away, like our new Visions Health Program. Students can walk away ready to begin working toward nursing fields, and that's just a terrific opportunity for students. And these are very rigorous programs, and later tonight, you're actually going to hear about the law enforcement program. Angie will speak to that.
Can you also mention the fact that they help the students actually find apprenticeships in those particular areas that they majored in, which I always thought was just a real plus for that program, to get these young people set in a good and solid career?
Absolutely. The work-based learning piece of it is a huge piece of it, and I know Mr. Lowry was going to speak on that this evening, about the different types of organizations and corporations around our region that our students actually do go and work with in order to further their career. I mean, even just there's the, I think it's called San Giuseppe, which is a grocery slash catering place across in Yorktown, not far from where the Bosies is. And some of our culinary students and hospitality students and Tilly Foster Farm students may go there and actually begin apprenticeships under the guidance of, you know, managers and deli operators and things like that. So they are learning so much, and then they get that hands-on experience in a workplace. So thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Loverio. So we do, at this time, have about 70 students in the program. It's evenly split between our 11th and 12th graders, and we have an even AM and PM split. So half of our students go at the EM time and the other half go at 12 or after 12. The midday is much smaller. Some join AM and midday, so that's where we have students staying for four hours, but largely it's either or, not as much in the midday. The programs our students choose will go through each of the areas. They're like these big bucket items. Hospitality and Cosmetology Academies is one. That is where we have our culinary program, food service, barbering, and cosmetology. And both culinary and cosmetology seem to see our largest groups of students, those service careers. Our Health and Human Services Academy, so we have EMT, law enforcement, intradeth occupations, medical assistant, child development. I got to go into this wonderful space where they have this nursery school kind of daycare, where the two- and three-year-olds are, and they're taking care of them, working with them. And then there's, I think, a four- and five-group that comes in for preschool. It was really neat to see students working under, again, the guidance of professionals in the career, helping to teach them how to work with young children, how to play games with them, how to teach them skills, and that was a really nice opportunity to see. This right here, this is an image of one of their live dummies. It's an interactive, I don't know another word for it, I'm sure Mr. Lowry would have the better word, but it's a live model of a senior in kind of hospice care. So they can, using the screen you see up there, the instructor can actually change this, you know, this model's blood pressure in a moment, and/or she could slow her breathing. And the students have to, in that real time, kind of make a decision about what to do with this person, and it's very lifelike and real for them. So they're actually interacting with what feels like a real person and caring for real situations in the moment that it's happening. And they have an entire room that has beds and models in these beds, look just like this, and they are, you know, all students can, you know, practice and learn how to handle difficult situations in the moment. And that's good preparation for when students actually have to do this in real life. That's a lot of pressure. That's very scary, but they're learning how to do it and how to handle it in the moment. Our Communications Academy with an animation and motion graphics, graphic design, and fashion and fashion design, emerging design. I had just gotten there actually the day after their big fashion show. Every year, they have this big fashion show, and the students trot out their lines on models that are other students, and, you know, they have videos made about them and, you know, kind of like a fashion designer documentary about how they came to their designs and things. It really is all-inclusive, and the graphic design students designed the program. It's all-inclusive. All of the programs come together. The culinary students create appetizers to be walked around during this. It's treated like a real fashion show, and the students get that really immersive experience and that collaborative experience, where they are actually doing the work to put on the fashion show. So this is, I know, a hallmark event that I used to go to when I was at Bosie's. It's really something to see. If you ever have a chance to go to the fashion show, I highly recommend it. It's a lot of fun. And that Construction Academy, so carpentry is part of one of their programs, but the Construction Academy features architecture and engineering, welding, HVAC, construction electricity, and our students are working with the real machines, real equipment. They have their hands on and are involved in everything. And, you know, as we get into other things like the auto mechanic, they even have a garage. They will pull a car in and do the car wash, do the detailing, fix the car. I know people at Bosie's who will bring their car to be fixed in their garages. So things that, small machines and things like that, our students do have their hands on and are working on for real situations, not something that's pretend or that's never going to be used again. It's actually somebody's vehicle or actually somebody's machine that they're operating and using or fixing and repairing. We have our urban forestry students. We have about three students in that, and microcomputers. We have about four students there. And again, that vet science program that I mentioned earlier. So our Environmental and Business Academy is seeing a nice increase in students. And then again, there's that Transportation Academy, auto mechanics and small engine repairs, where students really do have their hands on real vehicles, real people's machines, and they're fixing them and improving them and learning all about how they work. As a matter of fact, I was talking to Mr. Lowry about this as we were walking through, and he said the small engine repair department is not as popular because nowadays, people just buy a new one. They don't necessarily look to have it fixed. So it's one of those departments that may be shifted and innovated into something that's a little bit more modern, but currently, we do have one student in small engine repair.
We should go to EV buses.
I'm sorry.
EV buses repair.
That may be something that they're looking at. Before I bring up Angie Moreno Sosa to talk about her experience in the Career in Tech Program, I just want to speak a little bit to our other career exploration opportunities we're offering our students. At this time, we are exploring a new, we're piloting a new program that we may look into adopting further called TREC, and it's through a company called Transfer. And Bosie's is actually looking at this option too, not necessarily through this company, but maybe a different one, where virtually our students can engage in career and tech programs. So there's a headset, and there are program software that engages you in a fully immersive environment of actually doing the work with your hands, but not actually putting your hands on something. So you're learning how to do things that may be out of reach. So for instance, what that looks like here in Putnam Valley, we don't necessarily have an auto mechanic department that they can work on a car, but they can through this virtual simulation, and it's all done through, if you've ever seen the Oculus, Meta's Oculus, it's kind of like that, where it's a headset and hands, and you feel it, you feel things, but it's a virtual environment, very cool stuff. And then for our middle schoolers, Ms. Melody Ortiz is working on a really great initiative right now with that same company, Transfer. They have an app called TREC. And TREC is a gamified system of finding out what types of careers are out there, what you'd have to do if you want to learn more about that career, what kind of classes you'd want to take, or how you could explore that further, what kind of colleges in the area specialize in that. So it's a really interesting platform to get students to start thinking about the types of careers that are out there, above and beyond what they might hear about on a regular basis, but unique careers, careers they might not be thinking about that actually do speak to some of the interests they have, which this app does a quick survey to see what are their interests and strengths, what do they like to do? And then it comes up with a handful of careers that match those strengths, and these are like solar panel specialist, or, you know, these are things that they may not be thinking off the top of their head, I want to be this when I grow up, but it starts to get their mind going about what is out there and available. So those are some things that we're working on, on the career front here on site, before they start working toward applying to anything at Bosie's in high school. So with that, I'd like to hear from one of our students and her experience at Bosie's in the law enforcement department. So Angie, come on up.
Hi, my name is Angie Moreno Sosa. I am a student here at PBHS. A little bit about me, so I moved to Putnam Valley District in 2020 during like the COVID year and stuff like that, so it was very interesting. It was exactly February, so it was a month before everything happened, so it was very different for me. And it was a, it was like a new experience, moving to a new place, and then everything just like, you know, shutting down, so I didn't really get a chance to like meet people and do all that. But I do have to say that I, when I came here, I was astonished by all like the activities and opportunities that I've had since moving here. I've been able to take full advantage of like these extracurricular activities, sports and clubs, including being part of the varsity soccer and lacrosse girls team for the past four years, as well as captain my senior year for both sports. I've been a part of the, okay, this is going to be long, the Mind Over Matter Club, the Yearbook Club, the Debate, Environmental, SAD, Sage Crew, Young Historians Society, World Languages Club, the Library Committee, and Building Theory Committee. Big Buddy, Today's Students, Tomorrow's Teachers, which is a regional program at PBHS. It's like they're participating in it, and it's like they offer college readiness opportunities and connections to like many local colleges around the area, all throughout the state of New York. I've also been able to get my seal of bilinguism and civic readiness, and I've also gotten the opportunity to accumulate more than 300 hours of community service.
I was going to ask what you do in all your free time.
Oh, you know, just more of that. For the past two years, I've also been attending PNW Bosie's, which is, I'm doing the law enforcement programs, as you can see up there, but the first year, we were introduced to like the functions of the criminal justice system and including like the responsibilities of the police, the court system and corrections. We've worked on police tactics and like practical skills, as well as like fingerprinting, which was very fun to do, some handcuffing techniques, which was interesting, but we've learned, baton training too, some DWI field sobriety tests, like traffic stops, some crime scene investigation things. And then this year was criminology. So it was all about like the mind, it was all about like the sociological, the psychological and like the biological causes of like why people do stuff, crime, victimization, crime statistics, some crime theories, and police strategies. I've been certified in unarmed security recently, FEMA active shooter response, and first aid and CPR. And by passing the Criminal Justice Day exam, we can also get college credits, so I think it's around like five or four college credits. Through the two years, we've also had many guest speakers that are in like various criminal justice fields. So we've had like the National Guard come down, we've had the Carmel Police Department a couple times, and we've had like K-9 units, like I think police and fire. So that was also very fun. They were just walking around, roaming around, and while they were speaking about this type of things. But this year, I'm also what they call a four-hour student. So as mentioned before, there's different options you could do at Bosie's. I do four hours, so I'm there from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and I take two hours of law every day, and then during the week, the other two hours are like divided into different classes. So these classes include emergency medical technician, which is EMT. It's like a separate program offered. I know there's like one student from here who does that like in the morning, but then I also, I'm combining like my law enforcement and my EMT. So I, like, we've been preparing for like the New York State Required Written and Skills Exam to be like New York State's EMT certified. Through this class, I've also been able to get like my first aid and CPR certificate, like in law, so I'm doubling on that. And I've also been learning things like medical and trauma patient assessment. So you know, what you do once you first come up there, is it a trauma case, is it like a medical case, stuff like that. I've learned how to take like vital signs, so like blood pressure, heart rate, respiration rate, all that, and then airway management, oxygen therapy, cardiac arrest management, and assisting in childbirth. That was a good class, or a couple classes, and ambulance operations, of course, et cetera. And at PNW Bosie's, we're actually lucky enough to have one of the very few EMT teachers that is certified to give us five college credits through WCC or Rochester Community College. I think she's like one in three or something like that. It's like, it's very rare, and so we're lucky enough to have her. I also took participation in government my first semester, and now I'm taking economics, which is like the required courses to graduate, obviously. And then I also have a gym class, of course, we got to get the gym credit. And last but definitely not least, I'm taking college English, so I'm getting about four college credits also throughout, through WCC from writing a research and writing literature, which is just English 101 and English 102. I've also had the chance to join the National Technical Honor Society and Skills USA, which is just like a program where we get to compete in like our trade and things like that. One of our students, actually Brianna, she's like doing the four-hour cosmetology program, and I think she got like first place or like somewhere, she placed in like the Skills USA competition, so that was pretty great. To wrap it all up, I think the PNW Bosie's Tech Center is just absolutely amazing and has given me and many students like me a lot of chances and opportunities that we probably wouldn't have had, like continuing college or even just going straight into the workforce, because we're, we get to experience things we like or don't like. Like if we just straight went into like a job and we didn't even take some classes about it or even learn a bit about it, then maybe we didn't like it, and we would just stay there for 40 years, just wasting our time, when we could have had an experience like this, where we just took one year where we got to learn and wake up every day and be like, oh my God, I'm excited to do this, but I don't know if I'm going to do it for the rest of my life, you know? So yeah, thank you.
Angie, Angie, can I ask you a question?
Any questions?
How did you find out about the Bosie's program? New to the district, you come in, COVID, but you ended up in, you know, an outstanding program. How did you find out about it?
So actually, like my counselor, so I like talked to her like about what I wanted to continue and like what I wanted to do, and she just mentioned about like this tech center that like we could, I didn't know it existed before, like I think my sophomore year, when we got like a virtual tour and we got to talk to the teachers and stuff like that, and that was very exciting. I got, I signed up for like four. I was like in education, law enforcement, sports medicine, and I was like, I want to hear what these teachers are saying, like I want to hear how they talk about their class, you know, like do I want to do this? And law enforcement just caught my attention. I talked to my guidance counselor, and I was like, wow, that was great. Thank you for telling me about this program and immediately signed up.
I love that. I love that the counselor introduced you to it. That's really important, because you have no idea how much I love this program. When I was assistant principal, once upon a time here at the high school, my principal would send me every two weeks, three weeks, to the tech center to talk to the kids, and I saw the great things that were happening there, and I want more of our students to see this and, like you, experience a great, great program. And I thank you for introducing it to us from your perspective. You, I think you're going to do great in the world.
Yes. Thank you for, thank you for listening. Yeah, I, I think it's great. Definitely more students should try to do it, whether they're going to continue on to four, four-year university or just straight into the workforce or even armed forces. I know one of our students who I go to law enforcement with is going to the military in, like during the summer, so that's great.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Sosa, I have a question for you. Are we looking at becoming a state trooper, New York City Police, or local deputy?
So yeah, I am going to the University of Albany, and I'll be studying accounting and criminal justice. So I plan to doing some, to like, I want to work for the government, so probably some forensic accounting.
So Governor Sosa is what I'm looking at?
I think that's great. Wow.
You are going to be something great.
That's impressive.
Thank you.
And we are so, I just want to say this, I'm so sorry, Jen. I'm so proud of you. You are not only a scholar, you're taking advantage of every program that we could possibly offer you. It was wonderful to hear all of these different clubs that you were in, plus you're in Bosie's, like you are my kind of girl, and I'm so proud of you for going above and beyond in your own life to make your way, how smart you are to get some experience in the fields that you think you might like and give yourself a chance to try it, because the worst kind of life is what you talked about before, 40 years of doing a job that you really don't like, and most people, that's what they do. And so kudos to you. I'm so proud of you because you're getting that seal of bilinguism. Good for you. We're going to see more of that as Putnam Valley goes forward, and we're just really proud of you. You are Putnam Valley pride, so thank you so much.
And juniors that you know, talk up the program. Sophomores that you know, talk up the program.
Everyone, I have actually, I have, like during, like after games on like a bus ride, they're like, so how did you know you wanted to do, to go to tech? And I was like, oh, sit down, let me, well, you're ready to sit. Continue to sit down, relax, I'll tell you all about it.
I'm sure you're a great representative of the program. Boy, that's outstanding.
Thank you so much.
Real quick before you run, I just want to give you what they stated, everyone stated, you did an excellent job up here speaking, and I'm just very proud of you, or we all are, what you've accomplished in your high school career in these programs, and thank you for sharing it with us.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate all your compliments.
So I promised to be the last one. They let me get the last one. But I did want to first, I did want to first thank you. It's, I think that was actually one of the most impressive presentations we've seen all year. I'm actually very saddened that although Mr. Levine is back there, nobody else is here. I would, don't, if I invite you back, next time there's some controversy and we have a room full of people, just so they can hear you speak, your passion, you're so well-spoken, and you're such a good representative for Putnam Valley, for Putnam Valley Schools, and certainly for the CTE program. So thank you, and like everyone else, I am sure that you will go on to do great things and we'll take great pride in all you accomplish. So congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question for Jackie. Next time, like
Next time, like we're always free for a field trip. So next time you go there, I'd love to join.
I would love to. It's one of my favorite places to visit.
I was gonna say, anybody who's, yeah, anybody who's never experienced that program, you need to, to get over there. It will wow you. I, I've been such a fan from way back. When I used to be liaison to Lakeland and Panis out of Putnam Valley before we had our own high school. I would make it a point to go to tech. I, I love that program.
So something interesting happened in the CTE program for next year that to my knowledge has never happened before. And they actually exceeded the number of seats that are able to provide students. So for the first time in history that they know of, they, they actually weren't able to place some students. So I know that they're actively looking at creative solutions to figure out how to find a place for everyone who wants to take advantage of it. But it has grown to, I think they had over 1,500 applicants.
They've doubled their number of applicants.
For next school year. And that exceeds their physical space and staffing to be able to provide instruction to that number of students. So it's certainly a program that has skyrocketed in terms of participation and has now exceeded their capacity to provide that expense. So I know they're optimistic that they're gonna find a placement for all of our students. But we have some students that are still waiting placement, sort of been waitlisted.
Let's hope they get it.
As they, they try to figure out the schedule and find a way to accommodate these needs, so.
A note about that, the CTE certification is a little challenging to come by because it does require professional experience or at the very least an undergraduate degree in the field in which you want to work. So it is hard to find folks that do obtain the CTE certification. I know the state is working on making it a little bit easier. But part of that piece is the capacity piece, having enough law enforcement instructors to be able to satisfy the interest. And another note on this law enforcement program and how cutting edge our own Bosse's is, they have one of the only three in the Northeast virtual simulations for the law enforcement program where students are, and actually it's used with FBI, police. They've had people come to their Bosse's to train. But simulations of real-life situations, everything from a kid stealing candy and, you know, using de-escalation tactics to talk someone down from, you know, an escalated situation to real-life situations that they wouldn't even necessarily put students in front of. So they have this cutting-edge technology. They are always on the cutting edge of new fields and new programs and software and tools. Their architecture program is second to none, has outstanding materials in order to be able to help students build what they dream. And it really is a fascinating program to visit and see for yourselves. And they're always welcoming tours, so.
Jackie, do you know, well, I didn't realize it till the end of last year, but I think I, Guy and I used to go to their graduation.
Yes.
And I don't know if I missed it or, I don't know. But I wanna make sure when we get that information, that it's passed along.
Do you know the date, Bridgette?
So that we can attend.
June 5th. So we can get you additional information, June 5th, it sounds like.
It was on June 5th.
And we can get you information and I'd be happy to join you too, so. As long as my schedule allows it.
And in addition to that, you mentioned your friend Brianna? Your friend that received the award, the.
Overstudies, yeah.
Yes, yes. Whenever, we'd love if, you know, students achieve something like that to have it come back to the board, because we'd love to acknowledge them or at least state it here.
Absolutely.
I got a house inspection.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Wonderful job, Angie.
Yes.
Good job. I just have a question about how we publicize our Bosse's Tech program to the masses. I think it's great that the counselors are having those one-to-one conversations. But I do think having students that are so successful in the program.
Talk it up, yeah.
Talking it up, maximizing that. You know, maybe Angie would be willing to do a short little video about her experience for the scholars in Putnam Valley to see. Perhaps even incoming eighth, ninth grade students from the middle school so that they have an idea. I know my daughter's an incoming ninth grader and she has an idea of what she wants to do. And this may, may suit her. But I didn't know about this and I've been in education all my life. I didn't know the extent to which the Bosse's program has now gotten, you know? And so I think that that's amazing. And I would like to see the word get out a little bit more for our students to be able to take advantage of, of the programs that are out there. Obviously, other students are taking advantage of it too and understanding how, how many opportunities there are within this program because they're at maximum capacity now, right? So I don't know if we could do a mass advertisement. I would even suggest perhaps a field trip to see if we can have kids go over there and check it out.
I think you'd do that.
You know, do we do that?
They'd do that, right?
So some things I can add to the conversation. We do visit Bosse's. They do have a tour for students. And they also come here and present to our students here.
Oh, great, okay.
We've also taken some great posters. They really have wonderful marketing. So they have these great posters with QR codes that students can actually check out. They're on the doors right outside the guidance department, I believe. So we are working on publicizing to the students. But I do love the idea and can talk to Mr. Mello about students and alum coming back and actually speaking to the students the way other alum do when they come back from college. So that might be something we can add to that, that event when we do that.
And, and the great thing about the tech center, it does not negate college. I mean, Angie, you're a perfect example for that. You're going to attend college, you know, to reinforce the background that you've already acquired. A lot of people think you go to tech colleges out of the, the running. It's not, it's not. This is a great component to that, so, yeah.
And how is the program presented to parents?
I'm not exactly sure. I know that it's talked about, I believe, at back-to-school night.
They have an open house, I know that.
They do have an open house. Bosse's themselves does hold an open house that parents are made aware of. But I'm not sure if there's other, do we do other things to market to the parents?
I mean, I think it's mostly just communications. Like we send out blasts of communications to parents when the opening house is being held or what programs exist and things like that. So we don't bring parents in, as we're aware that typically that's very few people who show up. But we do send all that information directly to parents.
Usually they go there, yeah.
Yeah, they, our guidance counselors send lots of communications out, connect that information, and I know that's included in those.
I was gonna say, in the past, I think I remember at back-to-school nights, having a table. But I don't know if they still do that or not. That'd be another opportunity when parents come through.
And Reese, what about, like, what is it, Studio 10 whatever? What, you know, the video studio thing?
Oh, Studio 116.
There you go. I mean, that, that might be another way to meld the programs. You know what I mean? If you, if you're, or if those students are interviewing the students who are going to Bosse's, it might be a good, you know, way to meld those programs. I know you won't be here to do it, but.
Dan will be.
She still has a month to go.
Dan, Dan will be here, that's right. Dan, Dan's here.
I have 29 days left, guys.
We're gonna take full advantage of Reese. She's here for the next 29 days. We are, we've already been named in six different promotional videos that we wanna create before you, before you graduate.
This is true.
The most exciting being the absentee ballot. So you're gonna have to work on a good script to make that sound exciting.
Capstone.
You're gonna be in New York though, right?
Yeah.
Next year, so you're not that far. We can get you back.
And she's gonna charge us for it when she comes back.
And she, so she should.
That's right.
All right, we're gonna do it to you on your report now.
Okay. First up, next Wednesday, May 29th, is the Science Research Symposium. This is a night where our science research students present their research and show off all of their hard work throughout the program. That's next Wednesday, May 29th. The senior prom is June 6th. That's sadly a board event meeting, so we won't be here. They brought, they brought back the Powder Puff Game this year. So that's seniors versus juniors. That's Saturday, June 15th on the turf. And this Powder Puff Game is collecting money for ovarian cancer research. Donations are greatly appreciated and it's all going to really good cause. Today was the final high school student spotlight award ceremony this year. The student spotlight awards is an opportunity for teachers to recognize students for their positive contributions in the classroom, how they've helped others or improved positively personally. The senior awards will be held on June 4th at 7:00 PM in the PAC as well as the athletic award ceremony on June 10th at 5:30 PM. Both, both events will be held in the PAC and they'll be livestreamed for our viewers at home. And you can find all livestream links on the PVCSD.org website. And also I have a couple other dates of awards and stuff like that. So our fourth annual IB diploma candidate banquet is Monday, June 3rd at 6:00 PM. I believe that's in the cafeteria, right? Senior class awards, like I just said, Tuesday, June 4th at 7:00 PM. Freshman class awards, Friday, June 7th at 9:26 AM. That's very specific. Sophomore class awards, Friday, June 7th at 11:50 AM. Junior class awards, Friday, June 7th at 1:16 PM. And again, the athletic awards are Monday, June 10th at 5:30 PM. Thankfully, IB and AP exams are over. 171 students took 15 exams, rating 515 papers and 14 days of testing. There were also 96 freshmen and sophomores taking four AP exams. And then Regents exams and finals are just around the corner, beginning, beginning on Friday, June 14th. Like I just said, seniors have 29 days to graduation. I'm counting down. Senior week begins on June 6th, right after our last day of school, which is June 5th. We wanna remind students, high school students, that the Algebra I Regents is June 4th. So there is no school for other high school students except those that are taking the Algebra I Regents on June 4th. There was a high school chorus concert last night. And the high school band concert will be June 5th at 7:00 PM in the PAC. The high school track team is heading to sexuals tomorrow. So good luck to everyone that's competing. And we wanted to tell our viewers to check out PV Commits Instagram page. That posts like seniors, their decisions. So like where they're going to college, what they're studying, if they're doing, if they're minoring in something and, you know, what their track is. So you can follow what they're doing with their futures. Once again, that's @PVCommits on Instagram.
When is the high school concert again? The June 5th, did you say?
The band concert?
Yeah.
June 5th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. All right.
So it's nice that we got word from Mr. Scampoli, I think, that, that they've selected two people to replace you.
Yes.
Even though you're irreplaceable. And they were looking at a third. I'm just curious what you thought of the idea. We, I've, I've been thinking about it of a, of a, of a junior taking that spot and then making like a two-year commitment so that they have some more experience? I wondered whether you thought that was a good plan or it's better, you think, to have three seniors or?
I, I think that's a great idea. I think having lots of like diversity and your students like coming from different paths is very important. Like for example, like Charlie and Kira are IB diploma candidates and I'm not. So like that's a different perspective. So I think that like, yeah, I think we are like throughout the grades, there's always different stuff going on and different views and perspectives. So I think that that's a great idea, being younger than just a senior.
I just didn't know if two-year, a two-year commitment is, you know, I mean, it's more than, you know, well, obviously more than one. And I, I, I looked into, I've, I've been looking into the training that we talked about at the beginning of the year. But I think the training, I, I gave the link to Mrs. Bellino, but I think the training is for people, student reps, who are actual board members, who like vote, they're elected, you know what I mean? So it's different than our, the way our student reps work. But I do think I'd like, since we know at least two, to invite them over the summer, if we have a meeting, just so that they get to sit down with us and kind of under, you know what I mean? So that they're not, not kinda like just thrown in at the end of October.
Yes.
Here you are. So, but we do appreciate that, that, I know you worked on that, so I, I appreciate that.
Barbara, I, I love the idea of getting a junior on here.
Yeah.
I think that's a great idea. Really, I support that 100%. I, I think that really is.
It's Mr. Scampoli that I should contact, right, about that?
Yes.
Yes?
Yeah, or Mr. Mello.
Or?
Mr. Mello.
Oh, Mr. Mello. I mentioned it to him last night, but I'll, I'll send it to both of them. Okay.
And I'm, I'm meeting with the student reps and I actually think Reese is gonna join us next week. So the new onboarding student reps and I are scheduled to meet next week at Wednesday at 9:30. You coming? I know you're on the emails, but.
Yeah, I'll be there.
It'll be good to have, you can give some perspective as to having just finished the year. It'll make them more comfortable than me promising them that nobody will throw a shoe at them or anything, so.
The, so you won't be here on the 6th?
But the 20th is the last one. That's the day before graduation.
And we could, and you can invite the new ones to, to that meeting too.
Well, that would be nice.
That would be great.
To introduce them maybe.
Yeah.
That would be great.
So.
You guys have done such a terrific job with this this year.
You've been terrific.
You've been amazing.
Thank you.
Considering all that you're involved with to make that time.
Yeah. Okay, superintendent's report.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So I wanna begin by thanking the community members who came out and voted and supported our school budget. So the school budget passed 752 votes to 608. While I would love for that margin to be wider, I do appreciate the fact that 752 community members came out and supported it and our entirety of over 1,300 community members coming out and vote, while still a slim, small portion of registered voters, if you look at neighboring districts, is significantly more than what other districts see. Our proposition for the school buses was also approved as well as our establishment of the new capital reserve fund. And in terms of the two vacated board seats, Barbara Parmley was re-elected to her seat and we'll be welcoming Sasha Hayes on as a new board member as we say goodbye to Ms. Helen Horvitz. So thank you for your service. You will be deeply missed. Some of the events that have happened, our eighth graders returned from their Washington DC trip, a trip I remember vividly as an eighth grader in Putnam Valley attending. I know that we've received rave reviews from the students who attended and looking forward already to next school year's trip. National Honor Society had their induction ceremony. I always love hearing the seniors report what colleges they're attending and what careers they plan on pursuing. Our high school video production club and IB film classes had their film celebration. And that was well-attended and a huge success. Concerts, our fourth grade had their concert. High school chorus concert and middle school choral concerts have taken place. I wanna thank the PTA for hosting the Meet the Candidates forum last week before the budget vote. I got to attend the Lyric Tech Expo as a recovering technology director. It's been many years since I've attended. I left terrified of AI and all the things it can do. But Ms. Levine keeps telling me that it's coming regardless of how terrified I am of it, so it was really eye-opening, and I started sipping the Kool-Aid and sending her links to different AI tools. So at some point in my life, I guess I'll have to use it. But it's really going to be probably the most disruptive and transformative shift in education since like ubiquitous access to the internet. And it's really going to change what we do, how we do it, and really what students learn and how we teach them. So more to be seen on what that brings to us. I attended last evening, Mr. Mellow, Ms. Palmerly, and myself attended the Val Sal dinner hosted by the Lower Hudson Council School Superintendents. It was held locally at Phillip Brown, which was nice. It only took forty-five minutes to travel a mile and a half down Route 6. While there was five hundred people in attendance, I think they underestimated the fact that those five hundred attendees were coming in five hundred separate vehicles, one person per car. But they did a fantastic job, and I felt bad for the Valley guys who were running up and down Route 6, dodging cars as they were trying to get everyone seated. And we have started our screening process for our next athletic director. So our hope is to finish screenings as we approach the beginning of June, go to a full committee interview in the middle of June, and hopefully recommend an appointment to the board at the end of June. At the latest, our reorg meeting in July. So more to be seen on that. In the news, the Putnam Valley High School Art Department is proud to announce that some student artwork has been on display, upcoming display, at the Lower Hudson Region Arts Show. And that's, it's a virtual show, and you can be found at the Lower Hudson Region YouTube channel 223. There's twelve schools, twelve school represented, and we are one of them. We spoke a little bit earlier about our, the Metro Awards for our production of Rent. Four individuals have been nominated in three different categories. That includes outstanding vocal performance by a male identifying performer, and that's Matsepo Kardahegay. I'm sure I messed his name up. Outstanding performance by a duet. Reese Emery and Haley Crunhun are, that's who we're voting for. And outstanding performance by student critic Peyton Faraguzzi. So congratulations, and we'll all be watching on the 10th, I believe, yep, Monday, June 10th at SUNY Purchase. You get to like walk the red carpet and like wear a fancy gown or anything.
Blue carpet, yeah.
Blue carpet, really cool. As we had mentioned, the Putnam Valley High School Science Research End of the Year Symposium is scheduled for May 29th from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, where the students will present their work. We have an upcoming IB banquet, and we spoke a little bit about the high school senior awards and the upcoming high school concerts. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, new business. Number one, please.
Resolved by the Board of Education to accept the final vote tally for the budget vote and board election held on May 21st, 2024 as follows. Proposition one, budget, yes, seven fifty-two, no, six oh eight. Proposition two, purchase the school buses, yes, seven sixty-four, no, five ninety-three. Proposition three, establish new capital reserve fund, yes, seven sixty-six, no, five eighty-nine. Board of Education candidates, Alexandra Sasha Hayes, seven twenty-one, Zayed M. El Jamal, three forty-three, Miranda E. Solti, four eighty-five, and Barbara J. Palmerly, eight forty-nine. Write-ins, there were twenty-three.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number two, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education hereby accepts the resignation of Mr. David Cantritz as per document 179-24 attached to the official minutes of this meeting from his position as Director of Athletics, Physical Education, and Health Services in the District effective June 30th, 2024.
Second. Questions or comments?
I just want to recognize, while Dave has been here for only three years, he's really transformed many aspects of our athletic department, and I know that he will be deeply missed, and, but I do also know that he is, whoever gets that position next will be inhering something that's really been improved over the years and something that will be able to continue to grow and improve moving forward. So, thank you.
Yes, I think he will be sincerely missed. I remember when he first came to meet the board, I thought, I have shoes older than he is. He just seemed so young, but he's so focused on the students and wanting them to learn the game, but also how that being an athlete applies to life. I just think he's done an amazing job, and, and we're going to miss him. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number three, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to accept the resignation of Bus Monitor Phil Peluso from the District as per document 183 over 24 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting effective May 17th of 2024.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number four, please.
Resolved on the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools to appoint Jose Cano to a probationary appointment of school monitor effective May 9th, 2024, with a probationary period of fifty-two weeks, May 8th, 2025, at the elementary school on Step One of the CSEA salary.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. Number five, please.
Resolved to accept the tax collector's report for the 2023-24 school year as per document 180/24 attached to the agenda and official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The resolution passes. I'm going to invite now the members of the public to speak on any topic. Okay. Quiet. Okay. Upcoming board meetings.
So our next board meeting is scheduled for June 6th. At that meeting, well, we're trying to plan, we're going to do a Facilities Planning Committee update. I found out this evening that our architect is not available on June 6th, so either myself and Dave Spittle and Jill will do the presentation ourselves, or we may delay it until June 20th, when our architect. And this is going to be sharing sort of the culmination of the work that had been underway for most of the year through the larger Facilities Planning Committee, community members, parents, administrators, board members, that were all part of that planning process. And it's really just to share with the board what our goals were, what the priorities of the work were, and then look for some approval to continue on that work moving forward.
Okay.
And according to research, twenty-nine days of school left.
But who's counting?
No, there's twenty-nine days till graduation.
Twenty-nine days till graduation.
There's a big difference there.
Fewer days of school left.
There's like five days until graduation for me.
Okay, board member comments?
Yeah, I just want to compliment again the arts program here at Putnam Valley. I attended the fourth grade concert and also the high school concert, and man, I just wowed every single time. Just incredible what these young people can do, whether it's a stage performance, whether it's graphic arts, whether it's singing, I mean, we shine with that. And I think we're one of the best districts within the whole consortium, if not New York State for the arts and all the other things that we offer, and just compliments all the way around. Also compliments to Dan and the whole team that set up the new form of voting, which was just phenomenal. It went so smoothly, and it was great for the budget vote, and it saved us a ton of money. And lastly, I had mentioned at the last board meeting that I was concerned about the oncoming teacher shortage, and I am. I've been doing some work with the Bureau of Labor Statistics, also some educational journals. We are looking at a tsunami of problems concerning recruiting educators, as bad as it was during the baby boom, when the, the teacher shortage was most acute, and New York State revamped, to attract teachers, revamped their retirement system and stuff like that. I worry that young people are looking at education today and saying, oh, wow, it's a big commitment, there's a lot of work, and the retirement system that used to exist is no longer there. And I understand the finances involved in that with the retirement system, but I would love to see this board just send a letter of interest to the Department of Education and ask them to reexamine how they can recruit more individuals. You're not going to get them into education with the current setup of benefits. You're not. I look at just here at Putnam Valley, how many people are opting to go into education, and it's, it's, a handful, maybe five, six people deciding to go into elementary ed or special ed and things like that, and God bless them that they're doing that. It used to be much better than that. And over the time, teaching, well, it was the problem that the country faced back in the 50s when the baby boom started. Nobody wanted to go into teaching. The salaries were low, and the retirement system didn't exist, and then they, they formed it and attracted a lot more, and they were able to overcome that. I just worry about the shortage, and it's specified, go to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, it's one of the areas that will have extreme disastrous shortages within the next few years. And even though population may be dropping, it is being complicated by, you know, an infusion of new individuals who are coming to our country. So the, the population here is really at its status quo, and just not enough teachers to go around. And we see it when we go to hire individuals. We have to offer higher salaries. We have to offer incentives to get them here. And even then, it's difficult. Everything I've read just paints a picture of doom unless the state and, and this, the entire country starts looking at education as a huge investment for the future. I mean, we're, we're a crazy country. We spend millions on people who stand on a stage and sing songs. God bless them that they make that much money. Or somebody who hits bat and ball. And yet, our teachers, though they make a living wage, it is not a great wage. And the retirement system today in New York State is really, really onerous to a lot of these. You got to work to sixty-two and contribute your money right up to that, that date. It's just for the work and the importance of the position. And I don't know what the answer is, because we, in New York State, we're taxed to death at every turn, and that's the only way the state can get revenue. But maybe they need to start thinking about allocating money from, or taking money from one source and putting it to another.
So you want to draft a letter?
I, I would like to draft, and all I'm going to say is, could you investigate how we can attract more people to education?
We'll look at it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do that. I have no problem. I just worry about it. And, you know, having lived through, when I was a kid, you know, teacher strikes and everything else because of the shortage and the need for compensation, I hate to see us go through that again.
There's a, a movement in some districts across the country to work with local colleges that offer teacher education programs, because it is no secret that there is a disconnect between the teacher preparation program and what teachers actually do in the classroom. And so some districts have aligned to certain colleges in the area that have those types of programs for education to create a pipeline for their own districts, because there really is not a good pool out there. Oftentimes, even if there is a pool, if the pool is not from the very same community, there's a disconnect there with teachers coming from outside of that particular district or area to teach. The culture may be different, and the understanding may be different of what education looks like in that particular community. And so there are schools now that are basically pouring into their children, doing some similar programs like we have at the Tech Center for Education, prepping kids a little bit earlier if they want to do that field, encouraging them to do so, and then helping them to get into a program to get to their certification faster with the, with the, God bless you, with the hope that students will then come back and teach in the very same district where they left. And so that might be something that we could consider.
The competition also is, between districts is huge.
Right now, which is, it makes it, we saw that last year, makes it very challenging. But I, I know that more and more districts are going to that sort of system. And the, the HR department of most districts is now also becoming the PR Department of Education. And so that might be something that we, we want to look into. But I want to piggyback off what you said about the arts. The fourth grade concert was last night, and it was just glorious. It was wonderful. The students had two bands, because they can't fit on the stage, so they had to do two different bands. And it was just, it was well-done, it was beautifully done, and all of our children sang last night, and it was just so beautiful. They sang their PV song at the end, and it was really wonderful to hear them do that. I also want to give kudos to the elementary school for their ENL night that they hosted a couple of weeks ago. I don't think we've had a board meeting since then, so I just wanted to say thank you to the ENL teachers over at the elementary school for the work that they did to prepare for that night. It was really, really great. And the Community Reads Day was wonderful. We had so many people that showed up to read to our children from across the community. I believe this was the record-breaker of how many people we had, and it was really nice to see everybody come out and participate and go into classrooms and have fun. So thank you for all of that work.
Okay, Janine?
Just in addition to everything that she said, like, I can't wait to go home and read my notes from Mrs. Swanson's class. I'm very excited about that. That's one of my highlights. But there was also the middle school concerts that was, were excellent, so great job for arts.
Helen, anything? I just want to, there's a couple of things I feel like I need to mention. I thank the PTA for, Dr. Luff did, but I want to thank them also for hosting the Meet the Candidates night. I know they got some pushback, and they held strong and held the night. But there were a couple of things mentioned during the presentation which are inaccurate, and I felt that I needed to clarify them. There was a lot of talk about a loss of state aid for special ed. That is not accurate. We did not lose state aid for special ed. Our special ed department works tirelessly to ensure that any student or every student has the program that they need. There was an intimation that, that are, that we're not bringing back our special ed students, and we could. I know that every year, the special ed teachers go to the schools of students that are placed out of district, one, to make sure that the program that they're supposed to be getting, they're getting, and checking to see, is there any way we could bring them back? We bring back every student that we can back to their home district if we can. So it is inaccurate to say that we are not attempting in every way possible. If we can provide a program for a student, we would bring them back and do that. We would never bring a student back if we could not provide a program for them. Last, there was mention that there's a large number of students leaving Putnam Valley for private schools or homeschooling. That is not accurate. We are the lowest, we have the lowest percentage of students leaving Putnam Valley for other private schools or homeschooling, two percent. It is the lowest in the state. It's the lowest in Westchester Putnam. I know that people read things in the newspaper, and they see, you know, hair on fire. This is happening, this is, but, but it's always good to check and see if it's happening here, because it's, it wasn't accurate to say it was happening here. It's not happening here. Our students stay here. They like it here, and we're happy to have them. So I just wanted to correct those inaccuracies. I don't know if anybody has anything to add, but I, I can't leave them out there. Somebody said to me, well, the vote is over. Yes, but our community still needs to know what's true. And it's not, I don't like leaving inaccurate facts on the table, so.
Yeah, I just, I hear all the time, I mean, this is why everyone's leaving Putnam Valley, this is why everyone's leaving. And I know it was something we had spoke about earlier, and I had refound, relocated the article and shared it. So out of every school district, public school district in Putnam County, Westchester County, and Rockland County, there's one single school district that has a lower percentage of students attending private schools, which means Putnam Valley is the second lowest out of the entire region in terms of the percentage of students that live within the boundaries of our schools that leave to attend private schools. And I think that speaks volumes to the education that we're able to provide students here in Putnam Valley, and the great pride that we should take in the fact that the families that live within our school boundaries are entrusting us with their children and their children's future.
Not only that, but we also receive students from outside the district. Garrison sends us, you know, a large percentage of students.
So I just caution anyone who buys into this gloom and doom, everyone leaves theory to look at the facts, right? And the reality is that we have the, nearly the lowest percentage of students leaving in the entire region. And to Sam's point, we have well over fifty percent of all Garrison students now scheduled to attend Putnam Valley schools, being the second year that we have ever been an option to them. So I encourage anyone to look at the facts and to really acknowledge all the great things that are happening here in Putnam Valley. So I did want to echo those thoughts. I also wanted to give a couple quick shout-outs. Obviously, everyone's excited that the budget passed, but I do want to quick shout-outs. Obviously, everyone's excited that the budget passed, but I do want to recognize Jill and the members of the Business Department for all of the work they put into not only creating that budget, recognizing the balance, the necessary balance between the student programs and the taxpayers of the Valley, but also answering the questions and doing everything else to get that information out there. So I do want to recognize Jill and her team for that. So thank you very much.
Yep, thank you. Thank you. I do too. I would, I was going to say the same thing. We have, I have so much support in my office for every, every thing, at every single level, you know, from phone calls to parents, to the community members, to teachers, to staff, answering all kinds of questions and just putting all of the information together. And I can't ask for, you can't ask for a better team, really. Thank you.
So the last thing I wanted to talk a little bit about was, there's been a lot of conversations about civics and civic engagement, and really the need to get our students involved at an early age and getting them to understand the importance of exercising the rights that they have in the democracy in which they live. So that led to the decision to hold a student vote, and that was something that we have done for the first time. And I just want to recognize, I thought it was a tremendous success. And I do want to recognize certainly Crystal, who played a big role in terms of designing lessons. Lessons were rolled out to students in classrooms, understanding the importance of civics and the right to vote and everything that goes into that. So that was shared with our teachers, who made it age-appropriate for all their students, and then ultimately shared with our students, and obviously organizing the student vote, ice cream or bubble bus. And I guess I could publicly, can, am I allowed to publicly announce the winner?
Ice pops.
Ice pops was the winner, much to my surprise. So at their field day at the end of the year, all students have been provided ice pops as voted upon by our students. So I know many others volunteered to man that station.
Yes.
But I do want to recognize Crystal and Jordan, the amount of work that you put into it. And I think it's something that will only continue to grow across buildings and gain more momentum in the future, as students really understand and appreciate the rights that they have. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much to the board and to Dr. Luft for supporting the effort to teach our children about the importance of civic engagement. I do anticipate that it will grow, because for the first time, it was a wonderfully attended event. And I want to thank our parents for ensuring that they brought their kids out. It was just beautiful to see parents and children, you know, taking a picture together with their I Voted sticker. It was, it was just adorable. And lots of memories were made. I think our children now have the understanding of the power of their voice and the power of a single vote, because the vote was actually pretty close. It was only about thirty votes off, and almost three hundred children voted. And so I think in our, for our one vote in our elementary school, that was a pretty good success rate.
Outstanding.
And I'm excited to see how we can get our middle school students and our high school students involved in a vote. Maybe I can pick your brain about that, to really start exercising their, their rights that were fought for, and they did not perhaps always have, if they were a woman or not of someone of Caucasian descent. And so I think that that's really important, and I'm just so grateful that it was supported by our PTA. I want to give them a big shout-out, because many members from the PTA came out to help us man that booth. They also are assisting in the provision of the vote prize, and as well as our teachers' union here, the PVFT, they also supported financially for our students to be able to get their ice pops. And so that's really exciting. It was either going to be ice pops or bubble bus, and our student chose ice pops, so that's what they're going to get. I think they were thinking about perhaps being really hot on field day and that that would be a nice treat for them. So kudos to everybody who came out to vote. It was really a great experience. I don't know, did we mention the kindergarten screening? Did I miss that? I just want to give kudos to that too, because that happened. We've been really busy in Putnam Valley, a lot going on. The kindergarten teacher department psychologist, Dr. Podesta, everybody really just had hands on Mrs. Robey. The kindergarten screening, it went very, very well. It was so smooth. Parents got a tour. I even saw things that I had never seen in Putnam Valley have an elementary school before. It was wonderful. So I want to thank them for that. My child felt very excited to come to school, asked me if she was going to school tomorrow after that screening. I had to break the news to her. She's got a few months to go, and she did not want to hear it. She was super excited about going there. And the eighth grade trip to Washington was also just phenomenal. I was present in Washington, but not with the students. And the pictures I received were just great. They had a great time. It was very well organized, and I'm very grateful for that. I think all of the parents felt that their children were safe while they were a few states away for three days. So a three-day event. Our staff went, principal went. It was just, it was a great experience for them. They visited, when I tell you, almost all of Washington in three days. They were exhausted when they got home. So thank you to everybody who made that trip possible. It's a big deal, and they really learned a lot. So thank you.
Okay. Okay, motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a, enjoy Memorial Day weekend, and thank you to all the people who serve and who continue to serve our
That's right.
country.
Remember and honor.
That's right.
That's what it's about.
Okay, good night.